Okay. We'll come to order. It's the Wednesday, February 18th, regular meeting of the Glendale Planning Commission. Could we have roll call, please?
Commissioner Schitt.
Here.
Commissioner Lee.
Here.
Commissioner Berman, Commissioner Thorderson, and Chair Kane.
Here. A report regarding posting of agenda, please.
The agenda for this meeting was posted on Wednesday, February 11th, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
All right, thank you. Would you please stand and join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Approval of minutes from the January 21st meeting. Do we have any comments or corrections?
I have none. I move except for minutes.
My second.
We have motion support for approval of the minutes of January 21st. Please call roll.
Commissioner Schitt.
Aye.
Commissioner Lee.
Aye.
And Chair Kane.
Aye. And a vote of three to zero, the minutes of January 21st were approved as prepared. I'm just double checking. We have no cards for oral communications. We have no appeals, no old business. Under new business, the first item we have is tentative tract number 70882. And as I read it in the record, I just want to point out that there's only three planning commissioners. So for this to move forward, you're going to need a unanimous vote. If you have some concern over that, or would like to continue the matter because of that, you know, I will allow that. Otherwise, if you're prepared to proceed after I introduce it, just advise us and we'll move forward. Okay? So it's tentative tract 70882. The location is 1130 Campbell Street. It's APN number 5647-015-010. It's an application to subdivide a proposed new story, new two-story multifamily development consisting of 12 condominium units over semi-subterranean garage with 34 parking stalls in the R1250 high-density residential zone. A negative declaration was adapted by the Design Review Board on August 21st, 2008. Staff is represented by Ms. Callejon. I know that's very close.
Well, that's good.
And there is a motion to recommend the tentative tract. Would you like to give us an overview of the project?
Sure. Good evening, Chairman Kane, members of the commission. The project before you is the request to subdivide a proposed new two-story multifamily development consisting of 12 condominium units over a semi-subterranean garage with 34 parking stalls in the R1250 high-density residential zone. The site is located at 1130 Campbell Street and consists of 15,253 square feet lot. The project will include demolition of the existing two single-family houses and the detached garage currently on this site. The subject site is located on the east side of Campbell Street. The site is surrounded by multifamily zoning on all side except to the east, which is an R1 single-family zone. The immediate block is comprised of two and three-story multifamily buildings. Access to the project is from Campbell Street. The subject site is located east of Campbell Street, south of Stoker Street, north of Dryden Street, and west of Jackson Street. The site has 62 and a half feet of street frontage on Campbell Street and is approximately 239 feet deep. Based on the Los Angeles County Assessor's Office records, the building were constructed in 1947 and 1927. The existing buildings are not listed on the City of Glendale Register of Historic Resources. They are not architecturally rare or significant in any way. Design Review Board Number One reviewed the project on August 21st, 2008, and approved it with condition. A negative declaration was adopted by the board on the same day. The planning commission will require to review and acknowledge this document. The project complies with all zoning standards for R1250 and is in compliance with general plan in terms of height, density, parking, open space, and landscaping. All utilities exist in the immediate vicinity, and municipal services adequately serve the project area. Planning Department staff recommend approval of the tentative tract number 70882 with 31 condition. And this is my presentation. I'll be glad to answer any question.
Questions from the board, first half?
And from me.
Did I miss an approval motion? I think we have a denial motion.
There should be one attached. It should be one in there. There, I have one attached.
That's what I'm saying, I may have blown right past it.
You already have.
This is right here.
Did I miss him? It would be page nine of the.
Oh, there it is. Yeah, yeah, okay. It just was so. Exactly. That's how I missed it. All right. Thank you very much. Any other questions for staff? All right. The applicant can step forward. We have two card, um, do we have it on both of these?
Mr. Chairman Kane.
Guess we just have one card in this.
Good afternoon. My name is Haik Marjory Ossian. My address is 1545 North Rodrigo Road, Glendale. I'm tract engineer. I've read the condition. I have no problem with the planning staff's conditions, and we will fully comply. And if you have any question, I'll be more than happy to answer it.
I take it by that statement, you're content with proceeding as it is today?
Yes.
With our three commission members?
Yes.
Who does, uh?
Chairman Kane, I do have a clarification. For tract maps, it's unlike appeals. For tract maps, it just takes the majority. So you have a quorum, so it just takes two people to approve it for a tract.
Thank you for clarifying that. You're comfortable that you'll still take the risk of two to one? All right. Do we have any questions of the applicant?
That's a nice question.
I see none.
Thank you.
It's pretty clean, pretty straightforward, from my view, as well.
Mr. Chair, I believe we're going to have another speaker on this item. Gentleman is filling out a card right now.
All right. On 7A, I take it? Doesn't say. This item?
Yes.
All right, step forward, please, and just identify yourself for the record.
Hi, my name is Mario Delfonso. I'm the president of the Campbell Place Homeowners Association, directly south of this project. I was late, I couldn't get a five-five. A couple of things. First of all, they've already demoed it. They've demoed the existing homes. And the night before, the gas company was coming to shut off the gas. They decided to do a little digging. It was dark already, so they broke the gas main. This was on file with the gas company. They didn't shut off the gas probably for about an hour and 15, hour and 20 minutes. So our block, our section of homeowners, you know, the gas company said, "Don't open any heaters," you know, "Air everything out." So then, the second thing is, as we had had the rain, they were hauling their debris out in their 10-wheel dump trucks, covered the entire street with mud, okay? So I called Department of Water and Power. I said, "Look, these guys are fire hosing the street."
Into the storm.
Into the storm drain, okay? I talked to Randall. Again, I don't get home till after 5:00. So everybody had gone, so I called the emergency number. They called me, we played phone tag anyways. That went on for a couple of days. Now, the city is very specific about, you know, washing debris down the drains. The main storm drain for Campbell Street is directly west of 1130 Campbell. That's the main storm drain for the entire street. So they washed half the street down. So I don't know what happened after that, but they haven't been back since, maybe due to the rain. Okay, so another thing is, they broke one of our planks on our fence, and I talked to...
Let me, let me just say that what we're doing here involves basically an approval to subdivide.
Okay.
A lot of things you're pointing out, I can understand would be of concern, but they're really not germane to what we, what we're acting on.
Okay.
What I would suggest, and I hear your complaints, is, did you, you know, I'm just going to ask, did you take pictures of the fire hosing or anything like that?
No. When I got home, half the street was wet, and I think his name is Aris, the main contractor, the guy using the heavy equipment, was removing his attachment from the fire hydrant. And, I mean, it's just, they're very careless. I work for Universal Studios, and we're doing the rebuild on the back lot. Every vehicle that comes out of that fire zone, we wash the tires off of.
You have trench plates, you have gravel, you have all that in place.
Everything.
Right.
And around the storm drains.
Well, especially when it's in October to, you know, April, basically, when you have to worry about SWPs and so on. So again, this is, this is off-subject. I should, you know, I'd like to close our discussion. I can sidebar with you, but the people you should be talking to is the Building Permit Office, Neighborhood Services, and Public Works, just like you have.
And Neighborhood Services.
Right. And, and to just stay on top of it, because they're clearly starting off on the wrong foot with you, and you just need to increase pressure on them to become good neighbors.
Okay.
And unfortunately, it doesn't have much to do with what we're doing here, but I understand your concerns, and I can appreciate it.
Now, about the plan itself, the existing driveway is directly north, on the, on the north border of the property line, the existing driveway to the, to the lot. They want to move it to dead center. And now, where that fire hydrant is, that, I think it's a little deceptive by their rendition there. Last, last meeting, we talked about that big tree that was there, so I don't understand why they just didn't keep the driveway in the existing location, because now you're going to lose one parking space as a double right now. You're going to lose one of them, they move it to the center. If they keep it in the existing spot, you will maintain those two parking spaces. You can't park closer to the hydrant because it's painted red. So I'm, that's, that's one of our concerns.
See, okay, that's, that's appropriate to bring up, absolutely.
I think that's it.
Okay. Well, the other items, just, you know, keep, keep your neighborhood group alert.
I have 15 homeowners to address, so.
Right. And if they don't pick up their game, they're going to have a very long and painful project. And the fact that you are here today to testify to it, hopefully they're listening. Okay? Anything else to add? All right. Thank you very much. All right, I don't have any other speaker cards. I would, I would like to have the applicant step forward again for comments in regards to the previous speaker's statements, especially about why is driveway where it is?
Well, the way the building has been designed, they could not leave the driveway at the existing location, because it's a subterranean parking. They would need additional turning area by the time they're going inside the parking. By leaving the parking driveway at the existing location, they would lose at least three or four spaces by the time they're getting into the subterranean. So the architect moved the driveway more closer in the middle of the property, so they will have turning area by the time they go approaching to their subterranean parking and meet the requirement, parking spaces. And that's, that's what my take is on leaving the driveway the way that they designed it.
I see that on the drawing, yeah.
Sorry?
I concur with that.
I do have a question about that.
Please.
And I, I don't know how pertinent it is to the plan and moving forward, but I can see where you would lose the spaces if you had it offset. But if I look at your plan here on A1, and I see where the first, at least the first two sparking, parking spaces are, and I, if I would come down that driveway, could you park in both of those spots coming down that driveway, do you think?
Oh, well, they will have hard time. I mean, they have to back, back and forth to get to that space. I agree with you.
At least those first two, if not, if not the first four.
Imagine if the driveway was at the beginning of, or at the existing location, they couldn't even be able to use those spaces.
Right.
So they moved it, and they angled the driveway somehow, so they can still have access to back and forth to those two spaces.
I compare this to the one item we had recently about the 25-foot radius. We don't have a 25-foot radius here, and I guess, I guess my only concern, we can move on, but my thought on this would be that you'd end up with people not using those parking spots, but it, they do account for the 34 parking spaces that are required, so I don't, I don't know what that'll look like, or what problem that'll cause in the future, but I just, I personally believe it could lead to not using the parking spaces, so it's just kind of tight in there. It's a bit difficult to park there.
The parking configuration has already been looked at it by planning and engineering and traffic.
Sure. I'm not going to, I'm not going to stop that. I just, for future reference, I guess. Thank you. Thank you.
Did, given the size of the property, did the city require a SWP, Stormwater Prevention Plan?
There is a condition, NYDS condition, that every property over five units, you have to comply with it, or you have over 25.
I didn't know if it was a half-acre thing, or something, so it's over.
It's a state mandatory.
When did you drive past the property? Last?
Last, I would say a month ago.
Did they have silt fence up? Did they have sandbags? Did they have the pollution prevention measures?
I did not see any of them, just to answer.
You're the, you're the civil designer?
Uh, no, unfortunately, I'm just their tract engineer. I didn't work on civil drawings.
So you didn't do the civil.
Right, no, I didn't.
So your knowledge that hasn't been put in, you don't know either way?
No, I don't.
Okay. All right. Mr. Garcia, what's the fine to the city for us putting stuff into storm drains that shouldn't be going into storm drains?
What's the fine?
The potential fine to the city?
I don't know the number. Oh, it's, yeah, those are, if we're violating, not the, the discharges themselves, but we're in violation of overall NPDS permits, there's a substantial fine per day, and I don't know the exact dollar amount, but.
Right, and if somebody is pushing stuff into the sewer that they're not supposed to, the city's going to be very interested in that, aren't they?
Absolutely, and we're, we paid attention to that as well.
And would that be Public Works that should be contacted?
Public Works and Neighborhood Services.
And Neighborhood Services, both?
Yes.
Okay. All right. I don't have a card from the applicant, but I presume they're here.
No, they are not.
They're not here? These are just friends of yours that popped in?
All clients.
Okay, just in the neighborhood. All right. I would suggest to the previous speaker that he check and see what sort of stormwater controls are in place. Make the call tomorrow, sir.
Good.
Like I said, I talked to Tommy Solar.
Mm-hmm. Kick it up, leave a message with Mr. Angle. He's the head of Neighborhood Services, and tell him you've left messages, you're not getting a response, that you've got a bad neighbor situation, you need him to come out. And hopefully, they'll respond to you. They certainly should. Okay. Any other comments for the applicant? Any closing, thank you, sir. Any closing remarks from staff?
No, nothing more.
All right. Given that, I would entertain a motion.
Let me ask you, do you have to read this?
No, 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 no.
Just A through, you can, you can do that?
You can refer to it as A through, and the number of conditions. You would probably read everything, at least in the first paragraph.
Sure, okay. I'll do that.
And if Mr. Garcia feels that's inadequate, he'll jump in and keep making you read.
I move that upon consideration of tentative tract number 70882, and after reviewing the records, files, reports, and all documentary evidence submitted with regard to said tentative tract, that tentative tract number 70882 is hereby approved, subject to compliance with the State Subdivision Map Act, Chapters 16.16 and 16.28 of Title 16 of the Glendale Municipal Code, Title 30 of the Glendale Municipal Code, and the 31 additional conditions listed below, and the planning commission hereby makes each and all of the following findings of fact. And that also includes A through I, along with 31 conditions.
Second type motion.
Motion support, call roll, please.
Commissioner Schitt.
Aye.
Commissioner Lee.
Aye.
And Chair Kane.
Aye. And a vote of three to zero, tentative tract 70882 has been approved. We'll move on to Agenda Item 7B, which is the downtown-specific plan amendment. You need a little setup time? Ready to go?
It's coming in right now.
Okay, well, we'll give you a second.
Don't give up.
I won't.
Anybody who wants to speak on Item 7B should fill in one of the pink cards that you see just inside the entry. Take care of it. And you should do that now, so that we don't pass you by in the public hearing portion. Let us know when you're ready.
I will.
One moment. Can we get the screen down?
While he's still getting ready, I'll just introduce the item. It's 7B, it's the downtown-specific plan amendment, general plan amendment and associated zone changes. Its location is the downtown-specific plan area and the north side of the 300 block of West Elk Avenue and the 300 to 400 block of East Elk Avenue. These are amendments to the downtown-specific plan, the general plan land use element, and Title 30 of the Glendale Municipal Code, 1995, general plan amendment 2008-003-004, and PZON 2008-007 and 008, relating to the following items. It's implementing minor text cleanup and corrections, creating a height, height slash density incentive for art galleries, museums, and similar exhibit spaces. It's modifying the north portion of the Alex Theater District to allow additional height and density. It's to consolidate the review authority for the projects that straddle both the DSP and adjacent zones. It's to create a procedure to allow projects straddling the DSP in adjacent zones, allowing Elk Avenue to utilize the DSP standards for the entire project. The recommendation is to recommend that City Council adopt these proposed amendments, and the report has been prepared by Alan Loomis, the resolution prepared by Laura Stotler. Mr. Loomis, are you handling the presentation for staff?
Yes, I am.
All right. Proceed at will.
And I am ready now. Thank you, Chairman. Very relatively brief presentation regarding these various items. There's obviously, you read a great deal of text to describe what's going on. I think the best way to enter into this is to understand what the intent of these amendments are, and a lot of the material is actually the mechanics of actually implementing that intent. Since Commissioner Kane is the only one of the members of the commission here tonight, who was actually on the planning commission when we adopted the specific plan, I thought I'd give a very brief overview of the specific plan, kind of what its intent was, and some of the major policy recommendations, before describing the proposed amendments. First of all, the downtown-specific plan is principally a design-driven plan for the downtown area. It describes a overall design vision for how the downtown should develop, and then within those parameters establishes appropriate policies and standards and guidelines. So that's why we start off with the image, that's sort of the aerial view of kind of how the downtown might evolve. See if I'm moving, I guess I, moving forward. Generally speaking, the boundaries of the downtown-specific plan are the streets that are shown on the slides, and you can see on the map the sort of boundaries that are located there. This is the adopted boundaries of the specific plan. Specific plan was adopted in November 2006 by City Council after a number of years of discussion, both with the council and with an advisory committee that helped develop the plan's recommendations, and of course, going through all the commissions before the council adopted it. The specific plan boundaries include most of the central project redevelopment area. That's the second line here, it sort of shows up in red. The specific plan also goes a little bit outside of the redevelopment area to encompass some parcels that are actually sort of related to the downtown, as well as a particular neighborhood known as the East Broadway Neighborhood. East Broadway Neighborhood is more or less where City Hall Campus is located. That's from Glendale Avenue over to Louise, and then, and once you reach Louise, then you're pretty much in the redevelopment project area. That's a neighborhood that was originally part of the RMU and CMU mixed-use zoning, which is kind of the precursor to the specific plan. So when we adopted the specific plan, we included that mixed-use zoning within the specific plan, included that area. The rest of the downtown and the redevelopment agents area was owned Central Business District. That all got encompassed into the, into the downtown-specific plan. And then a few parcels that were sort of across the street from, on Central and Colorado. Across on the west side of Central is actually outside of the redevelopment area, but was commercial zoning that was associated with the downtown and the Central Avenue corridor. Made sense to include that in the downtown-specific plan boundaries. And the same thing on the south side of Colorado. Part of the parcels on the south side of Colorado, jumped ahead, part of the parcels on the south side of Colorado also included two blocks that were originally in the South Brand specific plan, and that was incorporated into the downtown specific plan. Actually, this slide's, was supposed to be in color. Hopefully, it'll show up in color later. One of the key principles in the downtown-specific plan was to organize downtown by a number of different sub-districts. So within the overall specific plan boundary, there's a series of sub-districts that describe different characteristics desired in the downtown. And then, within those sub-districts, height and density standards, as well as land use standards are established. So you could see where, as there was at one point, a kind of uniform height restriction through downtown, or non-restriction, actually, in the downtown-specific plan. Now, depending on what district you're in, there's a variety of height restrictions. Maximum height is 24 stories, and then it varies down to four or five stories. Let's see, there's some missing graphics here, but there's also a whole series of design guidelines that augment the height and density standards, as well as requirements for open space. Now we're having major technical difficulties. There's also requirements for public open space built into the downtown-specific plan, and then, it looks like this isn't going to work, so I will try and do the presentation verbally. And an important part of the downtown-specific plan is actually a set of incentives that are built into the plan. So there are, you can get a heightened density bonus if a project provides certain project feature, designer use features that are desired by the city. These would include hotels, affordable housing, additional public open space, sustainable design. There are about seven of them altogether. So that's an important component of the specific plan, and a number of the projects that have come forward under the specific plan, not all of them, have utilized one form of these incentives to get additional height and density. And as Commissioner Kane knows, those projects come to the planning commission with a development agreement, as part, as a way of memorializing the use of the incentives to get that additional height and density. And so what, over the course of reviewing a number of projects in the specific plan area, the City Council asked us to look at a few of these requirements, and over three different study sessions last year, they came up with a series of possible amendments they'd like us to look at. So those are detailed in the staff report. The first of these, Item A, really is a series of minor text cleanups. To a large extent, that's associated with... To a large extent, that's associated with, one part of it is associated with simply making sure that the land use tables in the specific plan are consistent with the current revisions of the zoning code in terms of language. There's a few minor things that potentially change the policy direction, but in a fairly minor sense. So those are, to a certain extent, just sort of corrections and cleanups on the text. Item B, in terms of a proposed amendment, was directed by council. They'd like us to include an incentive for art uses, principally galleries and exhibit spaces. So in the list, we're proposing in a list of potential incentives that get a heightened density bonus, that art galleries principally for visual arts would receive a density bonus equivalent to the square footage of the art space and an additional floor and height. So that would just be added to that list of incentives. That incentive for additional heightened density only has meaning for new development, and it's not an incentive to bring art and gallery uses into existing buildings. So we proposed in the zoning code, not in the specific plan, to include some language regarding the change of use and how that applies to parking, that arts uses would not be required to provide additional parking if it's a change of use in an existing building or space.
Mr. Loomis, let me interrupt for a second. My fellow commissioners and Mr. Loomis, do you want us to kind of stop with each one, or do you want to do a project review and have us come back on? Do either of you guys have your druthers?
I don't have preference.
Then let's just go through it all.
Let's go through it all.
Perfect. Just wanted to make sure before we got through.
Okay, thank you. Amendment C was an interest in expanding the capacity and height, raising the height restrictions in the Alex Theater District. The Alex Theater District is the mid-brand area between Wilson and Lexington. The north half of that district, the council asked us to look at raising the height limits. Under the adopted specific plan, the height limits in that area are two to three stories. The three stories is the height you could get with the use of incentives. And that was principally done to try and maintain the prominence of the Alex Theater spire. However, the block north of California, where you're one block away from the Alex Theater, the council wanted us to look at expanding the height limits there to be four stories, six stories using the incentive. That would be consistent with the height limits already in place for the opposite side of the alley on that particular block. Item D was to resolve a particular dilemma in the zoning code related to the review authority. If you're on the west side of Central or the south side of Colorado, it's possible you may have a parcel or a development site that is both partially in the downtown specific plan and in the adjacent zones. If you're in that condition, it's unclear in the code right now who you would go to for the review authority. Half your project would go to the City Council, the other half would go to the Design Review Board and the zoning administrator, so someone schizophrenic reviews. So we've proposed to modify the Design Review variance at CUP section of the zoning code to say any parcel that includes, or any project that includes a parcel within the downtown specific plan area would go to the City Council or redevelopment agency for consolidated review. So there's one body looking at one project. Finally, and this is where the majority of the material in your packet comes from, Amendment E. For projects on along Colorado, that might fall into the situation where part of the site is in the downtown specific plan and part of the site is outside of the downtown specific plan. The council asked us to come up with a strategy for, or a procedure that would allow a project that has at least fifty percent of the site within the downtown specific plan to use the DSP standards for the entire project. So the way we've proposed to accomplish this is with an overlay zone along Elk Avenue, which is currently multifamily residential zones limited to three stories in height. The overlay zone basically says if you're fifty percent of your project site is in the downtown specific plan, you can use the specific plan standards, which would allow you to build up to potentially four, maybe six stories, depending on the conditions on that property face on Elk, as well as the associated uses that come with the specific plan, which allow, as I said, for a variety of mixed uses, not limited to residential. We've maintained some of the basic design standards along that residential, the underlying residential zone, principally setbacks. The downtown specific plan doesn't really have any setbacks, so you potentially could end up with a situation where a proposed development would be right out at the sidewalk and prevailing setbacks along Elk are actually, you know, much deeper, so keeping the setbacks seemed to make sense. We're also a little more restrictive on signs along there to, since we're recognizing that's a residential street today. So that's really where a great deal of the text in the zoning code comes from, is to accommodate what's called the DSP adjacent overlay zone. And with that, that is the range of amendments that the council, as I said, over three study sessions had asked us to look at, and the staff report had tried to key where the different texts that came from, you know, corresponds to proposed amendments in plan and in the zoning code. The staff here that have worked on this, sitting to my left is Eric Kraus, who worked on the original environmental impact report for the downtown specific plan and prepared the addendum on that, and Chris Bagdikian, who prepared the zoning code text. So we're available to answer questions and take your recommendation. Thank you.
All right, very good. Any initial questions for staff right now? We have a, right now, we just have one speaker card?
Nothing right now.
All right, we'll proceed with this. We only have one speaker card. It's Mike Agabek?
Yes, it is.
Did I actually pronounce that right?
Correct.
Wow.
Thank you very much for allowing me to speak. Actually, you notice I didn't say I was for or opposed to it because I have, basically, I'm just asking some questions.
Mm-hmm.
I own a property at four oh five East Elk.
In just a moment, are you familiar with that location, Mr. Loomis?
It's in these two strips on either side. If you could put that second child.
I will try if the computer works for me. It doesn't seem to be working, let me try an alternative.
Go backwards. Yeah, this is fine. You'll notice that the, there are two areas, Elk, by May.
By May, just realize you'll be out of the range of the, your voice.
This area here.
You really need to be part of that, I'm sorry.
No, no, it's okay. Sir, point at the areas and then return to the mic.
Okay, and it is two.
Okay. Now, if you'd just repeat that, so we get it on the record.
Well, my question, my building is located in the west side of Glendale Avenue and north of Elk. It's probably the fourth or the fifth parcel from Glendale Avenue, in that area where it's been excluded from DSP.
Right, so you're just outside the DSP.
I'm just outside, right. And I have some questions and concerns, in no particular order. I noticed in the write-ups that the height of these adjacent buildings could be fairly tall. Now, the building that I own is an apartment house, and if you have a building which will be, in this case, right behind on Colorado and adjacent to my parcel.
And, I'm sorry, is it a two-story apartment?
Yes, it is. Currently, it is two-story, right. It would be towering over this area. You know, the question that arises is why was the two strips left from the DSP on both sides of Elk? It just doesn't make any sense that you would have an area that is part of, and then you have this in seven or eight or nine spaces, parcels, that are excluded on either side of Elk. I mention that because it just appears odd. It's just not a complete square. Now, having said that, depending on the allowable setback between the two parcels, that which is in DSP versus that which is just adjacent, which it would be my parcel, depending on how far you allow, I think currently it's, what, three feet? You have this very tall building towering over a bunch of residential buildings. You're talking about obstructing sun, air, you know, it just doesn't seem rational that you would have that. And I don't know what the allowable setback is between the two properties. If it's a considerable distance, it might be okay, but if it's right next to it, or very short distance, then that would be a problem for people who live there. And then, of course, the, on Elk, on that side, you have not only these series of multi-residential buildings, which mine is a part of, but you also have a, the Holy Family Catholic Church and a school. Parking is very tight on that street, very tight, between these old buildings that have, some of them have no parking, and so therefore the tenants park in the street. And then when you add the complexity of the church and the school, and the people coming and going and picking up their kids and going to church and so forth, it's an extremely tight parking situation, and this will exasperate that situation. So frankly, I, you know, I am for development, and that's improvement, but I'm very concerned about, it seems like this project was put together without much concern about, you know, the adjacent areas. And I would like the commission to look at that and see what can be done that is rational and complement the surrounding areas. That's basically it.
All right. Do any of my fellow commissioners have questions for the speaker, please?
Just a quick question, sir.
Yes.
Your property now, what is behind your property now on Colorado?
There are two parcels behind my property. One is a, I believe it's a one-story retail, and on the other side, on the west side, that will be on the east side of the Colorado side, backside. And then on the west side, it looks like, I think, I believe it is a motel.
That is multi-story.
That's two stories. It's the same as my building. Now, if you put a seven-story building there, then of course, that's not going to work out. And I don't know, I really don't know what the mixture of the allowable stories are on this DSP area. The write-up was kind of confusing, at least to me it was.
Are you, are you at the, are you in the middle of that area, or are you at either extreme of that cutout?
I am in the middle of.
I don't even know the exact, but I just wondered if it was at the end.
I am the fifth parcel from the right side on where that rectangle is.
Okay.
The excluded rectangle. If you counted five parcels, mine is the fifth one.
So you're one of the central parcels?
Center.
Yeah, fairly central, and one of the larger parcels. There are some single parcels, mine is a double. There are a number of double parcels there, mine happens to be.
So, thank you.
I have a question, and it's just a general statement, but it's also foreshadowing perhaps some of the questions I or my commissioners may have for staff. What would your feeling be of having the DSP extended to include your property, so that it would be part of the future development and the ability to, at some point in the future, no longer be an apartment building, but perhaps succeed to be a higher building? Are you happy with the zoning you have, or would you like to be included in the DSP?
Well, you know, you can't stand against progress, you know? Sooner or later, these old buildings have to go. So that's a given. If I had my druthers, I would just leave things alone. They're fine, just the way they are. But if you have to have the five and seven-story buildings, then why exclude that little parcel there? And if you look at it, there are straight lines, the parameter of this project is basically straight lines, except for these two little strips on either side of Elk.
So in general, you would entertain the idea of?
I think that would be preferable.
To be excluded from?
Than to be excluded and having these short, high buildings that happen to be R4s, I believe. I think that's the zone there.
Probably, what, twenty-two fifty, sixteen fifty? Okay, we're just checking your density.
Yeah, I think that's probably what it is. I haven't checked with my voice.
It's all right, they'll tell.
You know, this is not the final thing, but it would.
She's surprised, her mouth was open, she couldn't believe you were saying it.
It would actually make more sense, I mean, it would be more inclusive.
Well, we've heard your comments, and we'll ask some of your specific things and ask staff to comment on them, and when we get to that point, which is going to happen very quickly, I know one of them will be why the notches, frankly, on both sides. If there's nothing else, sir, I'll invite you to sit down and we'll get staff.
Thank you so much, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
I think I have to go out and call, but may I just ask one thing? What?
No, hold on, I don't have a problem with you doing it, but you need to do it at the mic, and then I would ask you to fill in the card afterwards, after.
I'm just curious, if it stayed the way it is, what is the setback from my property to a four- to five-story building? In other words, how much land is going to be in between?
I've made that a question to ask, so he will address that.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Great. All right, I don't have any other speaker cards, so I'm going to head back to staff, and I'm going to, I guess, first ask you, Mr. Loomis, to address a few of the things that I believe the speaker brought up to help.
Certainly.
Them understand it.
Certainly. I wrote down that there was really four distinct questions or comments, so I'll just go through those as I can. The question regarding, so there was one question regarding the height of adjacent buildings, in this case, the speaker's property on Elk to the properties to the north, that would be on Colorado Boulevard or Colorado Street. That side of Colorado is zoned, and the DSP is the East Broadway District. The maximum height allowed for buildings in that district is five stories. That would be if a project includes one of these incentive uses for that.
So it's four stories plus one possible with incentive?
Plus one possible with the incentive.
Thank you.
So the seven story that he mentioned is actually not allowed in the DSP on that particular property.
Is there a story limitation? You know, it's fourteen-foot per story, any limitations on that?
Yeah, there's a maximum height, so, which is actually fairly generous.
I bet it is.
Under four stories, it's sixty-five feet is the maximum height. Five stories, it's eighty feet.
Right, so in layman's terms, a story's generally like ten feet, so he's actually looking in eight, I'm sorry?
I'm thinking of.
So if it's an eighty-foot building, in some ways, he could think of as eight stories, but in practical terms, it's only five.
Right, they would not be able to build more than five actual stories, even if it was eighty feet, they should be very tall stories.
Right, but again, I'm just kind of translating, because the old, well, Loomis, ten feet is a story, but that doesn't apply to offices, for example.
Exactly. So that's the answer to the question of what would be the height of the buildings on.
And don't you think that's kind of abrupt, to have that sort of transition from his zone, as it is, to? zone, as it is, to, you know, that 1650 or whatever it is zone, to suddenly get an 80-foot billboard in his backyard?
It potentially could be, but the question related to the setbacks that he brought up is addressed in the Urban Design Standards of the Downtown Specific Plan, where there's actually a whole specific section that deals with the transition between downtown areas to adjacent residential, and does have a series of design guidelines and standards that require sort of the buildings to step down and be sensitive to the fact that they're adjacent to existing multifamily areas.
So he won't get a billboard, there'd be a stepping back of stories?
That's the intent of the design guidelines and the policies in the plan, yes. Is that there would be a sort of stepping effect. In terms of an actual number on the setback, the Downtown Specific Plan does not have any interior setbacks. We really allow the sort of creativity of the individual projects to sort of figure out what sort of setbacks they would need.
So potentially, they could build to property line?
Potentially, they could build to the property line. I would have to say, my experience in reviewing projects is that very few projects build to the property line, because they like to have windows on the exterior of their property that requires a certain amount...
10 feet, 20 feet?
Certain amount of setback, just for building code and fire code purposes. So that answers the question, I think, on the setback issue. As regards to why that particular strip of, the two strips of Elk were excluded from the Downtown Specific Plan, the reason for that is that there's parts of the, the parcels along Colorado that are in the Downtown Specific Plan were commercial zoning before the specific plan, those are mostly commercial properties. Made sense, as I said, to include them in the specific plan, since that's what was happening across the street. Whereas the residential parcels were existing multifamily, they've stayed multifamily. So the intent was, the commercial properties that were associated with the downtown would be included in the specific plan.
You dragged them along, so to speak?
Along Colorado, and the ones on Elk remained as multifamily. So the, we're sort of mapping the existing zoning, to the director, it looks like.
Mr. Hargani.
And I'd like to add one more thing, and another thing was to the character of Elk itself. While on a map of the Downtown Specific Plan, it looks really neat to actually put the boundaries right on the, on the street, in fact, when you are on the street itself, you look at the both sides of the street, and you want the both sides of the street to correspond and match. So if you brought the Downtown Specific Plan boundaries to the street level itself, you would have one set of standards on one street and another set of standards on the other side. The reason that the Colorado strip was included was to have balanced design, urban design en masse-ing on Colorado on both sides, but then have enough transition to Elk. And I think the overlay zoning district that Alan is proposing at this point maintains a balanced approach.
In terms of the setbacks, yes. And finally, just to sort of note a clarification, there are those two sort of notches where that Colorado frontage drops down in one case to Central, and in the other case to on Glendale, that's picking up existing commercial zoning on the ends of those two blocks. So that is why those parcels were excluded from the original Downtown Specific Plan boundaries. And then there was a question regarding, or kind of a comment regarding, a parking situation facing Holy Family Church. I'm not sure I can directly answer that, other than to say that it is possible, I suppose, that if properties facing Colorado that are part of the specific plan include, have frontage onto Elk, they may indeed choose to have a driveway access onto Elk. And that could happen whether the overlay district goes into effect or not. They could still use that parcel for a driveway, I suppose.
What's the role of the parking exception in terms of museums and so on? How would that potentially impact Elk, then?
That would impact Elk if, say, a property on Colorado, an existing building, like one of those one-story retail buildings, was to change from retail into an art gallery, they would not be required to provide additional parking beyond what they have. So if the structure is underparked for retail use today, and they change to an art gallery or museum, they'd be underparked for a museum, too. In the code, art galleries are generally considered, are the same as general retail, although in the specific plan, we've sort of defined that a little more tightly.
Is there anything, one question, is there anything in the specific plan or in this thing that recognizes the banquet hall aspect of an art gallery in terms of performances or exhibits? I mean, and art galleries can be a sleepy little thing, five days a week, and suddenly on a Friday night or Saturday night, they have an exhibit, which is great, it's lively, it's the energy we may want, well, we definitely want in a Downtown Specific Plan, but now it's suddenly impacting Elk with its residential character.
In terms of the language that we drafted regarding a parking exception, not exactly, doesn't address that.
Could the park, I'm sorry, I'm sorry to interrupt, but it's on my mind. Could it be added that with the parking exception, they would have to have a parking plan for events? Is there something that we could implement to control that whole lazy fair, park where you can type of thing, when those wild and crazy artists come into town?
The question is, could we propose language that says, I'm assuming you mean by, for the, for example, for the opening reception of an art gallery, where you have the artists and the patrons potentially come and have champagne?
A surge of people.
A surge of people. Because there's a distinction between that and then the other use, that some art galleries might in fact start renting out the art space for frequent parties, which would then make them akin to a banquet hall. So the distinction, there are two ways we could approach that.
Those are two distinctions, but in some ways, you almost have to have the same control in place.
Right. What, I think, I think we could approach those in two different ways in our recommendations to the City Council. One is to make sure that the distinction between an art gallery and art space and a banquet hall, where the use is frequently parties, with a lot of patrons coming to enjoy the party as opposed to the art gallery, is somehow distinguished in the definition. That's one, one way we could deal with it from the use standpoint, and we could recommend language on a parking plan for special events, that would say that for special events, they would have to come and take a look at parking and get some sort of a staff approval from transportation staff, if that's what you'd like.
I think, I think...
That could be a policy.
I would urge that something like that be put in place. Unintended, not so unintended, the consequences to a residential neighborhood by not having parking available. All right, Mr. Loomis, you were commenting on some other things, I cut you off, I'm sorry.
Yes, well, Mr. Hargani addressed the issue of the parking plan that you proposed. Two other things. One, as it relates to the definition of an art gallery use, in terms of getting a heightened density bonus that's being proposed, the language we've written requires that the art gallery or museum actually submit a kind of organizational, an operation plan that would define some of their minimum standards, how many exhibits they would have, or how many openings they would have. That would be subject to an approval through the development agreement, so there would be some possibility of control on that issue through there.
At least a little, that's a step in the right direction.
Not in terms of the parking exception, because that's located in the zoning code as opposed to the specific plan. I do have to make one correction on something I said earlier regarding the setbacks. There is actually a, required a five-foot setback where properties abut existing multifamily zones in the specific plan, along with the step backs.
So it's five feet plus step backs?
Right.
And the step backs subjective, encouraged, and part of design review?
Exactly.
And you had some questions?
Yeah.
At least.
Probably have questions when I figure out how to ask it. When we talked about the issue of the gallery and the parking requirement, although this is extremely exciting reading, I didn't, I didn't capture a lot of this, but there was something in this package about defining a gallery and the usage and the FAR relative to the gallery and the parking.
And I think performances.
Right, so I don't know enough about art galleries to understand, to me, it's not clear. Is the whole building the art gallery, or is a portion of the building the art gallery? And then, if it's different, in my mind, I'm thinking, well, what part would, what, what part of that gallery or that, that structure would require parking adjustments, and which part would not? And I don't, I don't know if that's a good question, or something, if you can understand where I'm going with that, but that wasn't clear to me.
You're talking about a building with more than one use, basically.
Yeah, and I would think an art gallery would have something, what I gleaned out of it was, the place where they display the art, so you can walk through and see it, that would be the part, that floor area ratio would not require a necessary parking bit, another type building would. But would that be 100% of that building, or would that be, and how do we define that?
If I may, Chairman, answer the question. The question, as I understand it, is, you might have a building where you have more than one use, one of which is the art gallery. The question is, how is the parking defined in that?
Essentially, yes.
Required in that particular case? What we're actually proposing is a distinction between an art gallery that's built into a new structure that gets the heightened density bonus versus the parking exception. If you're coming forward with a new building, the proposal is, with, including an art gallery, the proposal is that your incentive to bring the art gallery in is getting the additional floor area and the additional height. You're still required to park the art gallery, to what's general retail standards. The parking exception is only for change of use, where you've got an existing building, as I said, maybe it's a retailer, that goes away and the art gallery comes in to replace it. One of the reasons we decided to phrase it that way is that it's possible somebody may come in with a really great proposal for an art gallery or museum, get the heightened density bonus, and then a year later, that museum disappears and is already given. And if they didn't park that and turn it into a retail space, then a new building is underparked.
Okay.
So the parking exception only applies to a change of use situation for the art gallery. In the event the art gallery goes away, you'd revert back to the previous parking for the next use.
So that would, that'll be stated that way, that it would revert, or is it?
That's the way the change of use would work.
Would revert, okay. Now, now that we've just, we've started talking about Elk, I got, I have questions about the areas that are defined on the north side.
That are within the DSP?
That are within the DSP. Are those properties fronted on Elk, and are some of them fronted on both Elk and Colorado? Do we know that back end?
My understanding, and from driving around and reviewing properties, is that all of the properties on, fronting Colorado, only front Colorado with one exception, and that is the Church of Nice Science, which is the, I'm probably getting the name wrong, but it's directly south of the gallery, a parking garage. They do own a parcel that connects onto Elk.
Okay.
But my understanding is otherwise, people own parcels on Elk, they only front Elk and they don't own parcels on Colorado.
All of those, I would assume, are commercial structures?
On Colorado, yeah, for the most part.
What about Elk, are those?
On Elk, it's for the, it's all residential, as far as I know. There may be, there may be like a home occupation or something in there.
So, just to clarify then, what you had said earlier was you were trying to embrace already existing commercial use, but unless you misspoke, now you're saying, well, it's currently residential, and we're gonna make it commercial?
The properties facing Elk are currently residential, the properties facing Colorado are currently commercial.
The exception of the, that segment of Elk, which used to be part of the South Brand Specific Plan prior to it being incorporated to the Downtown Specific Plan, that area was not necessarily residential. That's why the entire block on either side of Brand on Elk was incorporated into the Downtown Specific Plan initially, but we stopped at the end of those two blocks, because then we were outside the South Brand Specific Plan and we were into residential zones. That's what, that was part, because the South Brand Specific Plan had taken those out of the residential stock.
So rather than switch over from residential, you were switching over from a commercial zone already?
That's right.
Even though there's residential use currently on a lot of the...
Yes, there's some scattered residential uses in the South Brand area.
But in terms of where the proposed overlay zone is, it wouldn't apply on that, between Brand and Louise, or, I'm sorry, between Central and Louise?
I apologize, this is kind of rolling out as we're talking, then what that means to me, if I, if I look at what the question was from the, the audience, and I, and I think through that relative to the overlay, and if that's residential on Elk on the north side, then we're gonna have the same situation, we're gonna, we've done here what, one of the possibilities of what could be suggested, as far as just making everything fall within the overlay. I didn't state that very well.
I'm sorry, I'm not sure I understood that.
I kind of assumed with that line that that was all commercial. Now that, and I'm hearing it's not, and I don't know what that impact's going to be with the, with the properties.
I think, correct me if I'm wrong, what I'm, what I'm hearing staff say is, the reason it has that, that configuration, is those properties originally, in the last zoning effort, were commercial. They were zoned commercial, even though some of the use has been residential.
Okay.
Where the areas they left out were zoned residential, they're just in gravel.
That's a very good summary. Took us a while to say.
I mean, that was a question that I had on, along the same line, actually, you know, the explanation that was given, you know, when Ms. Agabet, I guess, is that your name, you came up and asked why that was excluded, and you know, and I, to me, I was the explanation, I mean, you know, I'm hearing what was being said, but I'm not quite agreeing with the, I guess, thought process, you know, because you do have, I mean, I think you're looking at this specific plan to, you know, for next five, 10 years, long-range plan, 20 years, okay? And, you know, you already have a commercial zone, as you said, along north side of this Elk, that, you know, normally you said on, you know, both sides of the, the street, that you like to keep the same, you know, zone, but you already have existing zoning, where a commercial zone on north side and a, you know, residential on the south side. And then you come over here, and then you have a little spot there, and you have a little spot on the, on the west side, they're saying it's a residential zone, and so you're going around it. To me, it's not, you know, it doesn't seem consistent. To me, you know, I see their concern. So, you know, why not include those strips in there and, you know, make it all consistent along that, that whole, you know, area there?
We don't have anything against that, if that's your recommendation, that's something we could certainly forward. But if we do, I think the same standards that staff, Alan, is recommending for, in terms of setbacks, in the overlay zoning district, we would recommend that you maintain those, because at least then you're respectful to the other side of Elk Street. Originally, we did not include these, these lots, because there was a good place to stop, and then we, we defined things in a certain way. The reason the council asked us to come up with this overlay, or a version of this, was that they wanted to give opportunities to people who might want to combine lots and create. But if you'd like to recommend as an option for the City Council to consider moving the...
I think it's a lot better than for them to face 80-feet building, you know, in front of their, in their backyard, to have the, you know, actually, yeah.
Exactly.
Yeah.
More questions?
That's good for you.
Okay, I have a few more, in random sort of way. What was public notice and outreach related to this?
There was a public notice printed in the paper, a display ad, and then the properties along Elk were noticed along with a 500-foot radius.
So you folks were noticed?
Yes.
Okay, good to know, just want to make sure that the process works.
If I may, for, just for clarification, I've received three phone calls from the noticing process about this, largely just clarifying, asking what the proposal is, and how it would affect their individual properties from people located on Elk.
Do we have a shadow study requirement in place?
Not as part of the Downtown Specific Plan or our design review applications.
Should we make it a requirement, suggest a requirement addition for the overlay? I mean, you know, there's gonna be some flex going on with this, this, what is it, 1650 or 2250? Have we figured it?
It's both.
It's both?
That's which side you're on.
Right, one side is 1650, and on the east side, it's 1650, on the west side, it's 22.
There, there's, there's going to be some issues, obviously, with this residential zone, and in terms of, you know, adjacent development. And the more controls we put in place, if the residential, if it's decided by staff and council that the residential zone should be maintained, then despite the desire for Downtown Specific Development, we still need to be sensitive to that residential zone. And the more steps and procedures we put in place to minimize the impact, the better. Now, they're on the north, the development is on the north, they're on the south, so the shadow for this specific area, it's not gonna be that bad, but, but depending what's going on, anything we can do, if the residential zone stays in place, should, should be implemented. I'm sorry, Mr. Garcia, you?
Yeah, I have a comment, yes, I have a comment. When, when we prepared the environmental review for the, the plan itself when it was approved, we did a, not a specific shade-shadow analysis, because it was hard to do one when you don't know exactly where the buildings are, where the footprints are. When projects individually come in for review, if there's a situation where you have a large project next to a smaller building, a shade-shadow would be required as part of the environmental review. I can't, I can't see where it wouldn't be required.
So it's, it's kind of in place?
That's sort of outlined in the plan and in the, in the ER that was done originally, that this is how, it would be a kind of a two-step process, because you won't know what the shade-shadow impacts will be until you have a building... what the shade shadow impacts will be until you have a building designed.
I guess my suggestion, and I'm following up on, on what Commissioner Lee said, and is that you seriously need to look at that 1650 zone, and decide if you're going to allow development in their backyard, regardless of how, there's a certain sensitivity in terms of setback, very little in terms of setback, but step backs in terms of the upper heights. It may be time to look at 1650, survey the current property owners, and see if they want to become part of the DSP and have their zoning changed. I mean, I think it's appropriate, it's, it's time to look at that little nook and decide what happens. I mean, there's a lot of other things going on, what does the south side of Elk think about that? To me, there's just such an impact to those apartment dwellers, with the potential, the intensification of use to the north, and it may be time to really spend some time, survey the current property owners, see what they want to do with that, that zone as well, and weigh it against what you see in terms of the overall plan benefits and consequences.
If I may?
Sure.
Well, it's completely within your purview to make that as part of your official recommendation, to either consider not allowing an overlay district and maintaining the current boundaries of the DSP intact, and only consider having further development from the downtown specific plan, or to encroach in this area by incorporating completely this area into the DSP. That could be a potential recommendation, that we would be happy to pass forward, if that's what you wish.
Mr. Sheets, what have you been thinking about that zone?
Well, I mean, it seemed odd at the beginning, and I'm sure glad that you guys showed up and, and brought this to the forefront. My inclination, after discussing it, is to include it, especially the one on the, on the east side, because it, it's stuck in the middle. It could be impacted in the back and on both sides, not all those properties. And I don't know what that looks like, or what that could do, but it is unknown. The, the westerly side, I mean, it, it runs out into the other residential, maybe that could work, but it would seem to me, if we're going to do an overlay, you would have the same problem down there.
Mm-hmm.
If they, if they started to really develop that area and went to have some, some major structure changes. So my, my inclination is to, is to try to work towards including those two areas in the overlay. That would be my thought.
Or, or into the DSP.
Into the, uh, right, DSP, right.
Proper.
Exactly.
Well, we'll, we'll develop that in a second. I just, other than making, asking my fellow commissioners just for any specific comments on A through, was it E? A through E, as we wrap up our discussion. Is there, is there a specific project or two that people are talking about that is driving this? I mean, is there something out there that, that frankly, people aren't talking about, but should?
As far as I'm aware, there's no proposal, or even conjectural proposal, on Colorado and Elk.
Okay, so this is proactiveness, it's not being driven by somebody with, you know, with a plan in mind?
So we don't have another American Colorado?
As far as I know.
Mr. Hagan?
Not that that particular project has anything to do with this recommendation, I think it's, I think this came out of a hypothetical idea. But prior, just before the downtown specific plan was officially adopted, there was a project on south side of Colorado that incorporated a number of lots on Colorado, and, and lots south of Colorado, just next to Elk, and then that project came and got approval through the old process. So there is precedence, precedent for a project that would incorporate several lots on Colorado going all the way to Elk.
But, but there's not, you know, individual A that's got this little scheme afoot and we're trying to respond to it?
No, not, not that we know of.
That anybody knows of?
That's right.
Okay, it's nice to find out if there was. Okay. Those are all the general questions that I had, I think. Does anyone else have questions? Otherwise, I'd like you guys, whoever would like to go first, to weigh in on the A through E, if there's observations or other concerns that have been to them.
I had nothing on those, I just, El, any issue that I had, which was minor, was cleared up during just the presentation, I don't, I don't have any questions on those items.
Okay, you're comfortable with the changes, all right?
I just have a comment, and that is that, you know, when I joined this commission, I, and we've banned variances in the residential zone, and that we've kind of, you know, wanted to stay the residential.
We've suggested they be banned.
We've suggested that, right, okay. And, and this is, you know, intensifying downtown development and multi-use, and increasing the, you know, the development of the downtown area, I think it's a good plan. I, you know, I was not part of it, but, you know, I was, I was reading through it, it made a very interesting reading, there's a lot to be learned, but I, I think, you know, I, I am, I'm for.
Okay. I would deserve that, I think this was a well-developed changes, it's intelligent, it's well put together. I don't have much to comment on, other than what we've already said as a group, that we'll kind of incorporate into a motion shortly, or a recommendation, if you will. As I look over A, that the text cleanup stuff makes total sense, the compliance with the plan at CFO makes sense as it relates to building permits. I wondered when the Arts and Culture Commission was going to get pulled out of it and the city council put in, that was one of the changes made, makes total sense. The density bonuses for art galleries, museums, exhibit spaces, wonderful, I mean, everyone's, you know, pro that, especially if it's not coming out of our, out of our own pockets and it's part of intelligent development. On C, C, my, my basic concern was I wanted to make sure we weren't greasing the skids for some other, some unnamed individual, and this was part of a, of an intelligent process, and it sounds like it is. Consulting under D, consolidating the review authority, just makes sense, there's no reason to have two people rowing in opposite directions. And I was also pleased with some of the things that were brought together in E, because that's where I'm really seeing some sensitivity, where you're looking at, you know, adjacent residential uses and making sure things apply, and it's not where the downtown specific plan is like rolling over those uses, except for the point of what we're observing with, especially the most easterly of the residential zones to the south of the DSP. Those are all my comments. Mr. Lee?
As we're intensifying the downtown area, have we looked at the mass transit requirement to develop, I guess, you know, transportation in this area?
Let Mr. Lewis talk about the mobility plan, which was part, was adopted along with the downtown specific plan, the two projects together actually received a lot of awards because of the attention to mass transit, but I let Alan talk about the specific.
Yeah, the downtown mobility study was adopted shortly after the specific plan in March of 2007. That's a very comprehensive look at mobility issues in the downtown, done in conjunction with the downtown specific plan, anticipating that growth, and it covered issues related to transit, beeline routes through the downtown, metro routes through downtown, covered parking management, how best to manage our parking, and actually, the new parking pay stations out on Brand Boulevard was one of the recommendations that came from that study, as a way of managing our parking resources.
I'd like to go on record that I did not specifically endorse that. And continue.
Transportation demand management, as well as some capacity enhancements along certain streets through, in the downtown, so it was a comprehensive, multimodal look at mobility in the downtown.
One of the things, and I'm sure Staff has copies that they can give you, it was really interesting to see where our streets have trouble now, which obviously we know a number of them, but just what it, what they expected it to look like, like 20 years down the line, and it was just kind of fascinating to try to figure out how they're going to control that, buffer it, and so on. So, if they haven't been provided, if, if current members haven't been provided that, I think they find it interesting, you know.
I don't believe that you have, we'll get your copies.
Okay.
Okay.
And I'm, I'm happy to say, Don Shoup, one of my ex-professors from UCLA Planning School, who gives lectures around the world, has been using pieces of the downtown mobility study as part of his lectures.
That was, well, now that's copyrighted, is the city getting any royalties for that?
Public property is public property.
Hmm, I don't know, I, I think we're missing a revenue stream. God knows we need them. All right. Any other comments, questions? Could we entertain a motion for a recommendation to Staff, and search for some words as it relates to the southerly residential? You want to do the hard pulling here, Mr. Sheets?
Let me see what I can do here, I'm not exactly sure how to go first.
You give the first motion.
And I found my glasses, I guess. Well, let me see if this works, I don't have anything written down, but my take on this that, that is that we want to recommend the, the downtown, downtown specific plan amendment, general plan amendment and associated zone changes, as noted in the package, with the changes that were mentioned relative to the, the overlay, overlay zone and the downtown specific plan boundaries relative to Elk Street, that are now designated as residential and outside the boundaries, and bring them, incorporate them into the boundaries along Elk Street, on the north side of the street, both east and west portions of the, of the, of the zone.
Well, just to, to propose a friendly modification.
Please.
Prior to second, is what we're encouraging is staff outreach to those property owners, staff taking a fresh look at it, and encouraging that staff review that potential. I don't think that we're all ready, we're ready to say, put it in the DSP.
I understand.
We're leaning that way, but let's hear from property owners, let's have staff look at it, and the other part of that is, is in regards to the overlay, put in that staff should look at further implementations to provide protection and buffering to what are currently residential properties.
I couldn't have said it better.
I, I was paraphrasing what you said, so.
Right, I agree, that, so moved.
Well, since I, since I did that, would you like to support that?
I second it.
Mr. Garcia, are we going to jail on this?
We're the team.
All right. All right. We have a motion and support and advice of council that we can. Call the roll, please.
Commissioner Sheets?
Hi.
Commissioner Lee?
Hi.
Chair Kane?
Aye, on a vote of three to zero, with a few comments regarding the residential zone, the city, the planning commission recommends adaptation of the planning department's proposed amendments to the downtown specific plan, general plan amendment, and the others associated zone changes.
And if I may, Mr. Kane, make sure I got the motion correctly, with consideration to incorporate the, to do staff outreach, to consider whether those properties on Elk Avenue in the overlay zone should be incorporated into the DSP.
If the, if the property owners would like to see that happen, and then further what staff really thinks about it.
And you also indicated further implementation, or consideration for additional buffering for those residential zones.
Exactly right, all right. So that was, I'm sorry?
And, Mr. Chair, apparently as part of the package, you have two resolutions, one is actually approving the amendment to land use.
Oh, we have a whole stack, we have three, actually. You know, we did that.
Thank you very much for your input.
You can incorporate them all into one motion, or you can take them separately.
Okay. Well, we paraphrased, wrote the, two.
The downtown specific plan.
All right. Let's just, to dot I's across P's, we went, we went and renegated, we did our own, and everything. And let's just pro forma take care of O1, 2, and...
Those are really the two.
Okay. We'll just do that. It's busy work. Again, let's keep us out of jail.
I move Resolution 2009, number 200901, resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Glendale recommending approval of an amendment to the land use element. Planning Commission of the City of Glendale does hereby resolve as follows.
You don't, you don't need to read it.
Just items, section one, items A, B, and C, section two, section three, item, item A.
Your motion?
Second.
Your motion, support of the resolution, call roll on Resolution 200901.
Commissioner Sheets?
Hi.
Commissioner Lee?
Hi.
Chair Kane?
Aye, on a vote of three to zero, Resolution 2009-01 has been passed, let's, have you, Mr. Lee, do O2?
Since Mr. Sheets was on the roll.
Oh, I like to rotate you guys. I want everyone blamed.
We all bet authority.
Blamed equally.
Resolution number 2009-02, a resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Glendale recommending approval of amendment to the downtown specific plan. The Planning Commission of the City of Glendale does hereby resolve as follows. Section one, Planning Commission does hereby find and determine as follows, A through C. Section two, the Planning Commission has considered the environmental document and the then prepared for this project. Section three, based upon the foregoing, the Planning Commission resolves the following.
Okay. I second that.
A motion, support, call the roll, please.
Commissioner Sheets?
Hi.
Commissioner Lee?
Hi.
Chair Kane?
Aye, on a vote of three to zero, Resolution 2009-02 has passed, seemed remarkably similar to 001. And then we have one final piece of business.
I move that to recommend the city council adopt the zoning map and text amendments proposed to downtown specific plan, and the planning, and the planning commission staff report dated February 18th, 2009.
Did you want to add those other discussion items?
With, with the items as previously motioned. Support, please.
A second.
Motion, support, roll call, please.
Commissioner Sheets?
Hi.
Commissioner Lee?
Hi.
Chair Kane?
Aye, on a vote of three to zero, we recommend that city council adopt the zoning map and changes as stated in our previously made motion. I think that closes that portion of the public hearing, unless there's, oh, Mr. Hagan?
I'd like to just point out something, we are also, along with the, the proposed recommendations, we will be recommending to the city council to amend Title II of the Glendale Municipal Code, to, to require the same types of noticing for the downtown specific plan hearings that are required elsewhere for land use procedures. That's not part of the zoning code, and that's not part of the downtown specific plan, that's why we're, we didn't ask for your recommendation, but we thought we should let you know that that'll be amended, 500-foot mailing notices and poster size notices, et cetera, that we require elsewhere.
Reports, planning department updates, please.
This is a reminder that we are working on the North Glendale Plan, and so we are distributing flyers to businesses that are up there, and also community groups, just to publicize it and encourage residents, business owners, property owners to contact us, be happy to meet with them and talk to them, and, so we can get input on what they would like to tell the council, about what they would like to see for the future of North Glendale. And also, we'll add into it, but there was a action that was taken last night by the city council, and it looks like use variances will shortly be coming before the planning commission.
I do, I do have one question.
Sure.
Being the rookie here, you know, I do have a question, and one of the, is the package that was in the back, on the conditional use notification number PCUP 2008-001, 3443 East Chevy Chase Drive, that's been granted with conditions?
Let me, let me just ask, is that, period?
It's just a question, for my knowledge, yeah.
Okay, I just didn't want to misstep anyone, if it was going to come in front of us.
Oh.
I missed ours.
My, my question is that one of the, the comments that was made by the Public Works Department for suggested conditions, and, and it talks about the, the vehicles exiting the site should not back out, and that was the suggested conditions, does this suggested condition become part of the, the condition, or, you know, with, when you grant the condition? Because it says, you know, the, it cites Public Works comments. Now, it says major, major concerns, code departments, and suggested conditions, so my question is that when somebody makes this type of suggested conditions, does that become part of the package for them to be required to do it?
Commissioner Lee, it, it would depend on the language that's in the approval letter issued by the, the hearing, zoning officer, usually what, what does occur is says, all conditions that are incorporated from the particular departments shall be complied with. So you'd have to look at, in that case, that letter, probably, my, 99 times out of 100, probably it does incorporate the conditions that are, that are provided by the department.
Well, I, I kind of read it through, and it does refer to the, the comments from the Public Works Department, but, you know, I guess my question is that when someone makes suggested conditions, does that become enforceable or not?
Usually, yes. Usually, yes. And what happens is when the case comes through, the case planner sends those materials to the departments. They make their comments, so they make them as suggested conditions. And then when the hearing officer hears the case, he or she will impose those as conditions on the project. So that's why it states it as a suggested condition, but it becomes an actual condition when it's incorporated into the letter.
But it has to be spelled out here.
If it does.
So in other words, the review authority has the option of incorporating those as required conditions or not, and sometime, often they do and sometimes they don't, depending on the condition?
Because I did not read the specific, you know, in the, I guess, the conditions, you know, that, addressing that condition. And we've been talking about 25-foot radius and things like that, and then this is a condition that was identified that, you know, he should, they should not back out of the driveway, they should have a turning radius within their driveway to come out. I guess it's really the hilly area there, excavating quite a bit of dirt out of that area. So I just wanted to make sure that, you know, what the language was and how these conditions were applied. Okay.
Great question.
I could take a look at that afterwards and tell you.
Sure. Okay.
Any, was there more staff reports?
That's it.
What's at our next meeting right now?
Yeah, right, at the next meeting, we have an appeal at 120 East Cypress, and that would be on the March 4 meeting. And then on the March 18 meeting, we have an appeal scheduled for the Cascadia project. It's an old one. I know you were given copies of previous meetings a long time ago, so we'll have to get new copies and route those to you.
Have any of our recent decisions been appealed to council?
Not that I'm aware of.
So the property we worked on, I forget the street address now, the one that was very constrained, where they wanted the parking exemption?
Kirkby.
Kirkby.
Yeah, they didn't appeal the exemption? Or lack of exemption?
I haven't seen one. Would have to double check that one.
Should be passed, so. I just was curious if it was, you know, if anything was moving on the city council.
I'd have to double check.
And LA's got quite a little problem now with super graphics on the side of buildings. What do we have in place to prevent that? Mr. Higani is ignoring.
I can get the appeals list to see if there's anything from the commission. I'm sorry, would you please repeat?
Right, because staff ran the other way from it. It was amazing how they suddenly were... LA's got a problem.
We have several restrictions, and in fact, we have not been immune to requests for what we consider gigantic signage replacing building facades. And I think Alan Loomis and I have been invited to several meetings to discuss potential ideas, and none of them has knocked our socks off enough to say that it deserves a review by the planning commission and a forward recommendation to the city council. If such a thing comes up, rest assured that we would not, we do not have the authority to approve them. What it would, what would be required would be change in our zoning regulations, and we have not, sorry. Yes, there are considered billboards, and billboards are not allowed.
So are in-place rules precluded?
Yes. Glendale has one of the most restrictive signage rules in the region, and we're, we've been working hard to keep it that way.
Maybe we ought to slip a copy of it under the door in Los Angeles and let them take a peek.
I have spoken with my counterparts in the city of LA about that.
They must hate you, you know, the bragging that you do. I don't have any other comments. Anyone else? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
We're adjourned. You notice there is no...
There's no gavel.